All right. Welcome, everyone. The Board of Education meeting is called to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, again, welcome, everybody. All right, Secretary Giles, roll call, please.
All members are here except for Member Pigott and Member Himmelstab.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, moving on now to the approval of the agenda this evening. If there are no objections, tonight's agenda will be approved as printed. Very good. Now, we've got something really exciting here. We're going to turn it over to Superintendent Lindberg for recognition of achievement.
Thank you very much, Alex, if you'll join me up here by the flag. This evening, I'm very pleased to introduce to you, recognizing and congratulating Waterford Mont Senior and state champion drop diver Alex Fooling.
Woo-hoo! Woo-hoo!
Numerous accomplishments, I just want to name off a few. Six-time USA diving Junior Olympic Nationalist qualifier, USA diving Junior Olympic platform finalist, five-time Michigan Diving Association Diver of the Year.
Wow.
Three-time Lakes Valley Conference diving champion and current record holder, MHSAA Division One state champion 2022, and University of Michigan commit for class of 2027. Congratulations. Alex has worked very hard and achieved great success, obviously, here. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire Waterford School District community, congratulations, Alex. We are excited to continue to follow your career at the U of M. Your future is bright. And this season at Mont, you're going to continue to do great things for us and for yourself. Thank you.
So, Alex, I don't know anything about diving. So, give us the sort of rundown. How tall is this thing? I've seen it in the Olympics, but I know nothing else.
So, high school diving career is from USA diving.
Okay.
In high school diving, you only compete at the one-meter level. You do 11 dives. Your first five dives are required dives. Now, you can vary it up a little bit, but there are five required dives, and you're supposed to hit your compulsory dives, which are front, back, reverse, inward, and twister. They have to add up to a certain DD, which is degree of difficulty. And then, the next six dives are your optional dives. Now, you do have to complete the front, back, inward, twister, verse, and so forth. But those are your optional dives, and you get to do whatever you want. The higher degree of difficulty, the higher scores you get, the more points you get. So, doing bigger dives, obviously, results in more points. But on the USA diving level, you do 11 dives on one meter, and then, you have your three-meter dives, and then, you compete your 10 dives on the platform. You can go on the five-meter, the seven-meter, or the 10-meter. Primarily, me, I do the 10-meter platform.
Because, why not? Right.
It just definitely a little scare you, but if you practice it right, it's very easy to...
Oh, for sure. That's what we're all up here thinking.
But I believe on that one, you do four compulsory dives required, and then, you do six optional dives. So, obviously, my main board is platform. I don't really specialize in one meter, so... But platform is usually my board.
Nice. So, you're going to be diving at U of M? Will you have to specialize when you get there?
No. However, I would primarily be practicing platform more than the other boards.
Well, I certainly don't want to hog questions. Does anyone else have any questions? Yes, remember, Soddenland.
Well, first of all, Alex, congratulations on your phenomenal achievements. Congratulations to your amazing parents, who I suspect have been getting up early in the morning to get you to the pool for many, many years and supporting you every step of the way. You are an exceptionally well-spoken young man, and I can tell, just as charming as charming can be. So, personality, and skill, and dedication, and all of those attributes that we know went into the championships that you've... Your stellar, I guess, record thus far just means you're an all-around amazing young man. It's evident. It's so obvious, and we are so, so proud of you and just so proud to have you representing Waterford. That's such a good thing for Waterford and for all kids to see what's possible, and we just want to thank you for being that goodness for our community.
Excellent.
Yeah, Member Wagner.
I have one. I can't ever follow Joan.
No.
Yeah, I know, it's very difficult. All the things that Joan and Mike have said, but I had one. When did you start diving? Like, when did this become your passion?
I started when I was eight. And I started in 2012, when I watched our Olympic champion, David Budai, from the USA. And I was like, oh, that's pretty easy. So...
It's just down, right? Just straight down.
So, my parents signed me up for a couple courses. We didn't really take it seriously, and then, I started convincing them. I was like, I really want to do this. So, we started really getting into it. Later on, last year, I actually got recruited by David Budai, which was very, very crazy.
That's very cool. What is your goal? Like, what is your hope beyond U of M? Will you continue your diving career?
I probably will. I'll try for the next Olympics, because I'm 2027, so I'll go for 2028. But after that, I'll probably focus more on my studies.
Okay, well, good luck. This is so awesome. As a fellow Corsair, Corsair parent, I am very proud to say that you're also one of our Mont kids. So, just congratulations. This is very cool. You should be very, very proud.
Yeah. I, you know, everything you said, and great job, and I love watching swimming and diving. So, I, you know, here's to the Olympics 2028, baby. I'd love to watch you dive.
Yes, we would.
That would be so awesome. So awesome.
Will you come back with your gold medal?
Yes. Or at least say on the news or in one of your interviews, "My start began in Waterford."
I'm just in a cannibal. I mean, you probably don't know that as one of your dives. I don't know, it could be back triple... Yeah. Thank you.
Is there... So, sorry.
Please.
Is there a way that we can come watch you? I mean, at these events? Is that... I think, I guess I want to... Maybe Allison and I could talk to you. I would love to come cheer you on at one of your events.
Yeah, so we have small dual meets that you can come to. But as the USA diving season starts, there's our travel mostly, so.
Something like the Oakland County meet, where there's a lot of schools and a lot of pretty elite divers and swimmers there. That'll be coming up for boys' season, late January, early February, so.
I'm going to just... I'm going to put a tickler on my own calendar, just so that I can look for that, because I think that would be just amazing, amazing.
That might be cool.
Well, did... I don't know if parents and Alex wanted to get a picture with Superintendent Lindberg, if we wanted to make time for that?
Sure, I just wanted to say...
Please.
You know, Alex is a product of the school system here, so if you're ever having a bad day...
Yes.
Think of what, you know, your school system was able to produce. Obviously, the parents are involved. All the teachers are involved. We had great schools going through. So, if you ever get those knocks from the pool or from the parents, just saying, my dad, so I grew up with it. So, there are those bad days, you know, but Alex has worked very hard, but there's been many people along the way. Our athletics department has been there for him time and time again. You have fantastic facilities. You have the best pools in all of Oakland County. Everybody says that. Okay? So, you have great facilities, you have great educational opportunities. Alex has had fantastic opportunities here throughout every school that he's been to, and especially at high school. So, you have a wide array of courses available. Alex has been playing cello since he was six. He's had orchestra and music all the way through. So, that's, you know, it's stuff to balance both sides. So, it's developing the athletics, it's developing the education. It's really helped our families, so.
It's been a wonderful support system, really has. I mean, it takes the village, and it's no joke. It really does.
It really does.
Anytime we've ever had to reach out to anyone, a teacher, a loved athletics, it's just been such a wonderful foundation to be a part of and to have that sort of building block for him, and we can't thank you enough.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you so much for that. Thank you. Yes.
I was just going to say, I mean, I have goosebumps, I've got tears in my eyes, and it's genuine, because I don't think there's a person in the room that didn't need to hear that. And we just want you to know how much your comments mean to us, because those bad days exist, and I think everybody here works so, so hard to ensure educational and every opportunity for our students. So, to hear parents of someone like Alex saying that means the whole world, so thank you.
We know how hard it was during the pandemic, so.
And we just wish that more people would just do more, you know? And if we just... We just all just kind of encouraged one another, it could be such a wonderful, wonderful thing. And so, we have found that the small family that we have built in our community has just been paramount, so.
Well, thank you, and I just want to say thank you, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you. Well, did you want to... Yeah, we can maybe take a quick second here, snap some photos.
Maybe with Allison, too?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
I'm not Waterford's.
I'm with you.
Do we want to get one with Allison in there? Should we get one with Allison in there?
It's a great place.
Yeah.
And you, too. And you, too, Scott. You, too.
Your state champion board is up in the gym now.
Yes.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Excellent.
I'm like trying to get...
Thank you.
I didn't expect this moment.
Congratulations, Alex, and thank you so, so much for being here tonight.
Congratulations. Go get them.
Go get them.
We're really sorry whoever has to follow that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, here we go. That was really great.
That was great.
Thank you for making that opportunity available. That was really wonderful. That was really wonderful. I take it that there is no one here who would like to address the board tonight? Okay, excellent. Colleagues, we are now going to move on to our consent agenda this evening. Colleagues, unless there are any objections, tonight's consent agenda will be approved as presented. Okay, excellent. So, colleagues, up on our agenda, we have a couple information items, and we're going to first hand it over to our athletic director, Allison Sartorius, of us of Cooperative Competitive Cheer Program.
Yeah, this evening, I'd like to bring forward a recommendation to form a cooperative program for competitive cheer, and that would be with Kettering and Mont. Competitive cheer is only our winter competition season, so that would be November through March season. So, just for the competitive portion, for the sideline portion of the traditionally set football games, the ball, it would remain separate. It's not an MHSAA sport. It's something we have to offer our kids, but those would remain separate at each building, so only for the competitive season will be located to enter a cooperative treatment.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Allison? Yeah.
What does that look like?
So, competitive cheer, you have to have a certain number of kids per round in order to hit the map and not get deducted points. So, basically, last year, unfortunately, we didn't have quite enough, we had a handful of girls at each school, so we did not offer competitive cheer last season due to not having enough kids to participate. By the time the ball got rolling, it was already into the competitive season, so our coaches continued to work with the kids, we just couldn't sustain the competitive season itself, so we did not have one last year. So, basically, when we enter into these cooperative programs, they will go between the two buildings. We have practices sometimes at Mont and sometimes at Kettering. The coaches will come together and hopefully grow it to the point here, we do have, like, obviously, not to throw out our seed, but some substitutions, and maybe a small scout JV for those really, really new beginner kids as well. That's the ideal in a situation like this, but right now, we're hoping to have some there between, like, 16 and 18 kids, so that we could sustain that program.
And when does the season start?
November, right before Thanksgiving, so the week before the 14th would be the first official day of practice, and it ends the first weekend in March.
But they don't have to practice together?
They will, for competitive season.
Oh, just the season... Oh, but they'll be apart for...
Yeah, so sideline season is the chance that you see on the sidelines of the football. And certainly, they do some of the fundamentals in their gymnastics and those types of skills during the sideline season, but then, all the stunting and the routines and the competitions, you know, that they get scored on for MHSA competition and things like that, and that we go against South Lion and Milford and all those other schools as the winter season.
Thank you so much.
Other questions from Sartorius? Okay. Thank you so much, Allison. Okay, moving on now to information item, our Back to School 2022 with Assistant Superintendent Eldridge.
Good evening. On August 29, we welcomed nearly 7,000 students through our doors for the 2022-23 school year. It was a wonderful beginning. It was great to be in schools and see kids and see their faces and see staff face-to-face. It was really exciting. It felt like my first year teaching. To that excitement. And J.D. Kelly has put together our back-to-school video, and we'd like to share that with you now, who may have seen it on Facebook, but if you'd like to, we'd like to show it
Yeah, it's really nice.
And we do think it's something great here.
Yes.
Yes.
Well done, Sarah. Thank you so much for that.
Yeah. I watched it three times, just because, you know, now I have kids in college, so it was like kind of a boring start. You know what I mean?
Doesn't it feel like that was yesterday when you look at...
Yeah, you know, in the middle school and high school, it was kind of hard to get the pictures, especially with those two, because they're, like, pulling each other's hair and never paying attention, but the little kids and their toothless grins and so excited to go to school. I miss those days, and they all looked so happy, and you got to see the smiles this year, and you guys did a great job putting it together. I loved watching it three times.
And loved the sign. My... I think I'm too old to do this, but my mommy loves me so much, she made me... Yep, yep, that sounds right.
Well, colleagues, do we have any questions for Assistant Superintendent Eldridge about Back to School 2022? Yeah, it's going to be a great year. It's going to be a great year. All right, well, let's now turn to our Millage Renewal and Ms. Sarah Davis.
Well, good evening. So, I'm going to present tonight about the non-home stud Millage informational marketing campaign that we have planned. As I think you all already know, this is something that we're required to do every 10 years through different funding. It's not a new tax, and it's a zero-tax increase for homeowners, but we still need to make sure our voters are making an informed decision when they go to the polls. We're unable to state whether the public should vote yes or no, but we can provide them with accurate information on the millage as well as encourage them to vote on election day. So, first, I want to show you some of the materials we have created. The first is the logo, and this logo is being used as the basis for all of the other materials.
Very nice.
Okay. So, banners and yard signs, which are going to be distributed and hung at key locations throughout the district, social media posts that are going to be shared strategically from now through November 8 on all of our social platforms, a graphic with information that will run on Channel 22, our electronic signs, and the front website carousel, and a postcard will be sent out next week to every resident in Waterford School District and will coincide with the approximate time X and T ballots are supposed to be available at the clerk's office. There's a one-pager that you have at your chair. This one-pager was distributed to all of our school buildings, so that it can be placed at the front office for the public to take if they were interested in that information. We also emailed it out to Oakland Community College and Waterford Township, so they were aware of the millage and can possibly help us promote. We sent the one-pager and the logo to all of our principals, so they can disseminate it amongst their schools and their newsletters into their PTAs, and we're handing it out at all of the meetings we're going to with local community organizations. Speaking of which, Scott, Sandy, and I are hitting the community meet greats hard in the next couple of months, and we have a list of dates where we're meeting with these groups. So, we met with the Rotary Club on Tuesday. That went very well. We had some good questions and answered those. Obviously, we're here tonight at the board. Chamber Expo is at Mont next week. We're launching a district parent council, and for that first meeting, the millage will be one of the many topics we plan to talk about there. We're going to Chamber Picking Up event, Senior Center Lunch and Learn, Waterford Foundation, a booth at the Mont and Kettering game, and meeting with the Optimus Club. We're also looking to confirm a meeting with the Waterford Township Recreation Department's Golden Age Club, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for local seniors, but we're still looking to confirm a date. It's supposed to be on September 20. And then, obviously, as part of this, we had to create a webpage. So, this is the website we made. We created a front URL, wsdmi.org/millage. You can see on the right-hand column, it's basically the one-pager, but it's, you know, information about the millage renewal facts. You go down, there's the ballot language, so that when people go to the polls, they know exactly what to look for, what they will see. And then, we came up with some frequently asked questions that we thought would help residents to learn the information. On the left-hand side, we give a call for anyone who's interested in placing a lawn sign at their home or business, important dates to remember for the election, clerk office contact info, as well as statewide voter information.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Looking forward, we intend to have Scott mention the millage in the September episode of the podcast. I'll be sure to include it, and I already have, in any messaging that's gone out in the last week, we sent out our connect internal... I'm sorry, that's the external newsletter, and our news internal, we had articles in both of those about the millage, as well as the Chamber of Commerce's monthly newsletter. We have a message for that from Scott that mentions the millage. We'll be running as an Oakland Press physical paper, as well as digitally on their online platform. They gave us those free for using them to mail out the postcard, so that's kind of included in the price. And we're also going to have it inserted in the Senior Center newsletter. We are also working on a millage video that we hope to have completed before the district parent council meeting. That video will be used for promotions on social media, Channel 22, the website, and future newsletter articles. And lastly, the Oakland Press contacted me this week. They will be writing an organic article about all election information for the upcoming ballots, so I provided them with that. I'm sure we'll include it in that article. So, that's it for that campaign, and what we plan to do, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That is a robust campaign. Well, done. Well done. That is excellent. Yes, Rob?
You know, again, I can't really see up there, but it's basically the state needs to mandate it, that we collect this money, otherwise, we don't get it, we don't collect it, we don't get it. Is that spelled out in the thing, that it isn't a... Isn't from us saying, hey, we want more money? It's a state thing for us to be able to get our money.
Yes.
And it's... Because, again, I see that here, we passed it back in 2012. Well, we kind of have to, because we did it, I think, you know, '02, and we keep going back to 10 years. It's almost a month. It isn't something that we're doing to ask for it. It's something that we have to do just to collect it from the state.
Yeah, one of the things we're saying is renewal, and then a word that I think aligns with what you're saying, Rob, is maintain, to maintain what we've already got coming. We're not asking for additional, and this is to just bring in the dollars that are already...
Are already ours. We have to ask for them, vote for this, just be able to collect them.
The routine every 10 years, yes.
Yeah, which is kind of a... And again, it's the state collects it, gives it back, but if we don't ask for it, we don't get it.
That's right.
I think there was an initial Facebook post, which I think did a really nice job of spelling, spelling some of that out.
It's a confusing thing. I don't fully understand it, now you understand it, but I don't understand it.
Is that language in the post, we're just using the same language, right?
It was really great.
Right.
So, we had written it out like that for the video that we created. We already wrote the script, we went to a classroom, and we filmed it. We're still putting the other parts, pictures and whatnot, together. That's why it's not completed, but that same, it's that same language that will be used throughout. So, if you liked that, then...
There's a nice bullet here, Rob. It says, "Required for the district to receive the full foundation allowance established by the state," which was probably...
That's what I'm looking for.
It's kind of just...
So, it doesn't look like we're offering a money grab or something like that. This is our...
You could have said required by the state.
We have to jump through hoops to be able to collect it.
Yeah.
Yep. Member Wagner.
I have one question. Will you create a profile picture frame that we can put on...
So, that's where the social media plan, right now, we're focusing on the attendance campaign, because it's September, and September's Attendance Awareness Month, but yes, in October, the social media banners will change to "Millage."
Okay.
Support... Not support, "Millage Information."
Right, right.
But yes, that is part of the social media plan.
Okay.
We have strategically set dates of what we're going to and when we're going to post, and what's going to be in that post, and all of that up through November 8.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Well done.
Great suggestion.
Is there... I know that all of us will be out there providing information about the millage, but if you need anything from us, please don't hesitate to ask.
Well, I gave you all my lawn signs behind you.
Yes, all right.
Can you put on your lawn?
Perfect.
Can someone else put on their lawn?
Absolutely.
Those are beautiful, by the way. They're really nicely done.
Yeah. Colleagues, any other questions for Ms. Davis?
Great work, really great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, let's now turn it over to Superintendent Lindberg for our strategic plan, priority, objectives, year two.
All right, great. Well, in front of your seats, I know Sarah's going to bring up the one-pager. On the one-pager, of course, this is our strategic plan, our vision, our mission, our belief statement, and then, all of the five areas that we are working on. What... That's all been approved by the board. What the leadership team then does is we come up with our priorities each year. So, what you'll see on here is our priority objectives for year two, and I think it's a very robust plan. You'll see a lot of it is our things that we are... We have currently embarked on here in the last couple of months. What we've done is, in the last six, eight weeks, is very carefully mapped out what we believe are quarterly targets. And so, as I did last year, I will continue to update this with the team as we check in on my evaluation check-ins each quarter, so we can... And so, as I did last year, I will continue to update this with the team as we check in on my evaluation check-ins each quarter so we can be updated. But this is kind of a roadmap for us, and so some of this could change, but typically it doesn't, because we've been very thoughtful, and the team has mapped this out so we can keep ourselves accountable and on track.
Colleagues, as you're looking this over, please let me know if you have any questions for Superintendent Lindberg. This spreadsheet's really great. Thank you.
I would say too, and this team has done awesome work, I would put this plan up against any district in what they're doing in a year's time. Now, some of these, I do believe, will move into year three, but in terms of what this team has undertaken, in terms of curriculum, one-to-one, middle school teaming, in every area, what we're doing should affect everything that we're doing in the district, across the district and within the buildings and within the team.
Colleagues, do we have any questions for Superintendent Lindberg? Member Sutherland.
First of all, thank you for the transparency and the data-driven, precision plan that allows us to keep our eye on the ball. The, the line in purple, that, that's a goal that aligns with this?
Yes.
Okay.
So where it says WSD will ensure precision focus.
Right.
On learning by providing high-quality instruction, using aligned, adequate materials and state-of-the-art learning environments, that all of the priority objectives underneath that should support that goal.
Okay. Yeah, I'm seeing that. I just see a couple more or less, and so I was just wondering what the, what the, like, middle school teaming. I guess that's revise the curriculum in middle school and high school?
Well, each one of those bullets, so on each one of those.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay.
So what we're doing underneath that one, I'll just point out, provide training and implement problem-based learning. So that work continues, and then we have it going across the quarterly updates. The next one, revising the curriculum, the high school science, the CIA team is doing that. Revising the curriculum in the middle school and high school social studies, that's another item. The work we're doing with one-to-one devices, and then also the middle school teaming, is all done in that, underneath that goal area.
That's great. Yep. Yeah, I was thinking this one is six. That's why, that goes to the next one. Yeah. So when you, like, I know some of these are continue, 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 which is not necessarily a new initiative for that quarter, but when you complete, are you gonna?
Yeah, so what we do, like, what we did last year, and what I think worked well, is we will color code this. So at each quarter, so when I update all of the board on the goals, the work that we're working on, we'll color code this. And so red will mean it's not started yet, yellow will mean it's in progress, green will mean it's achieved. So the goal is that each quarter, most of them in that quarter, should be highlighted green. That doesn't always happen.
Sure.
But then we can, I can update you as we go through those, those updates, those meetings.
This is really, really nice work, all of you. I'm sure it took all of you a lot of time to put together such a detailed substantive plan.
We have. This team has done awesome work, and we've been working on it, and I think it would be one thing, we certainly could have put all this out here without our quarterly goals, you know, and where we want to be, but that is what, what took a little bit more time.
Sure, yeah.
So it kind of gives us a roadmap ourselves.
I'm sure of, of equal significance is probably the conversations that went into it. You know, what are the things we can do? When can we do them? How will we do them?
Right.
So that's, I know this is a kind of a, as detailed as it is, it's, it's a more high-level summary of some really, obviously, really good conversations that are happening and initiatives that you're working on, so that's really great. Thank you.
Yeah, I know. I'll just, I'll just underscore, I mean, just the approach to this, having a strategic plan, the things that are stemming from, are agreed upon goals, to have this roadmap. I mean, this is, it is both foundational work, but speaks to such a bright future here in WSD. This, this is, it's incredible. It is incredible.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions for Superintendent Lindberg?
I'm just really glad I didn't miss this board meeting.
Yeah.
It's just really nice to have good news, good news, great, you know, great thing. That's just, it's a really great board meeting to be at.
Yes, and thank you for this, because again, I do think, you know, when we talk to other board members, or you see things on social media, I do think that we can put this up against any other district in this county.
Absolutely.
In terms of the work we're doing and the momentum we have.
Yep. Momentum, an operative word. Very good, yeah.
Colleagues, anything else for Superintendent Lindberg? Excellent. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you. All right, we are now going to, going to move on to Secretary Jocelyn, who's going to try out her new ruler.
Superintendent's Recommendation 30-22-23, National Principals' Month Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution in recognition and support of National Principals' Month, October 2022. Whereas October 2022 is declared National Principals' Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with U.S. Congress to designate National Principals' Month and resolutions thereof. Whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. Whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. Whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards. Develop mission statements and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. Whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels to the success of students in Waterford School District, and to encourage residents to observe National Principals' Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of school leadership's, of school leadership's role in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Be it resolved in honor of the service of all elementary, middle, and high school principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education, and to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the month of October 2022 is hereby recognized as National Principals' Month. I so move.
Thank you, colleagues. This important motion has been moved and supported. Comments or questions? Yes, Member Sutherland.
I think the longer that I have sat in this chair, the more gratitude, admiration, and just a whole heartful of respect I have for our principals in the Waterford School District. This is a fantastic resolution that does a nice job summarizing, you know, the right adjectives and the right verbs, but it's the conversations that you have with the principals on what they're doing every single day, all of the, the stories, the way outside the box, things that you're not even thinking about, you know, where they're making sure children get home, they're finding little ones outside that, that aren't even part of their school system and bringing them in. I, I've heard so many stories of these big-hearted, amazing leaders in our buildings, who, you know, they set the stage for their staff, they set the stage for the families and the, and the children, and they, they hold the bar high for us all. So I just love this resolution and really wholeheartedly support that.
Yeah, I want to say to Mr. Gregory, Mr. Gregory is now the principal of Knudsen, where my sons go. My sons have been, they reported to me last week, they said, "Mr. Gregory's sitting out on the playground, working." And then come to find out that Mr. Gregory has several stations throughout the school, and he's, he told my wife, he said, "Well, I want to make sure that when students come to my office, that it's for a happy reason too, that it's for a reason to celebrate." And I thought that that really speaks to that, so much of what Jones said, and so much of what's captured in this resolution. And again, we're just so lucky to have such a great cohort of administrators and principals, so.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, colleagues, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. All right, Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 31-22-23, National School Bus Safety Week Resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution in recognition and support of School Bus Safety Week, October 17th through the 21st, 2022. Whereas the Waterford Board of Education recognizes that the importance of protecting the safety of Waterford's schoolchildren extends beyond the classroom walls in the school building, and whereas the board has great respect for the accomplishments of school bus drivers, mechanics, supervisors, and all school transportation personnel in providing the safest transportation possible for children to and from school and home. And whereas coordinating the countless routes over so many miles and supervising the dozens of students on each vehicle requires an outstanding effort put forth by these exemplary professionals who have devoted their careers to transporting our children safely. And whereas the board continues to recognize and to take great pleasure in commending the men and women who accept and meet the challenge of school transportation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the week of October 17th through the 21st, 2022, is recognized as School Bus Safety Week. And be it further resolved that this week is devoted to the recognition of everyone who contributes to the successful operation of our nation's school buses. And be it finally resolved that this special week serve as a fitting time to urge all Waterford drivers to become more aware of school bus safety regulations, and encourage all citizens to be alert and drive carefully near school buses. I so move.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Colleagues, comments or questions?
I like this one too.
Yes.
I, I love the bus drivers and, you know, maybe in capital letters, encourage the citizens, because our bus drivers are always very careful and looking out, and even with all the nonsense that we know goes on the bus and stuff, but I've seen just in the past couple of weeks on my way to work that we all need to be cognizant of that there are children getting on a bus and walking across the road or near a road, and we all need to stop to remember that this time of year, so.
Absolutely. Slow down. Don't be in a hurry. Let those kids get on the bus, get off the bus safely. And shout out to our amazing bus drivers.
Absolutely. First classroom of the day, and they take it seriously, and they do an amazing job of it.
Absolutely. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? All right, shout out to our bus drivers. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries five zero. Secretary Jocelyn.
Do you need some water?
All right. Superintendent's Recommendation 32-22-23, National School Lunch Week. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution in recognition and support of National School Lunch Week, October 10th through the 14th, 2022. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over six years through advanced practices in nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now, therefore, the Waterford Board of Education does hereby proclaim the week of October 10th through the 14th, 2022, as National School Lunch Week, and encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. I so move.
Thank you. The motion's been moved and supported. Comments or questions regarding National School Lunch Week?
Shout out to all the lunch people. My mom was one. She retired from this district.
I didn't know that.
She, yeah, she followed me, and my, once my brother was in first grade, then she started working at Della Luce. Then she tailed us to Pierce, and then she ended up at Mott doing, I don't know what she did, but.
Oh, awesome.
She was in charge of something at Mott, so, you know, ladies do a great job. Kids don't go hungry, even if, you know, they don't have money, they still get something, and, you know, and Michael and all these delicious things that he's coming out with, I mean, it's exciting, so another integral part of our district.
Yeah, and I believe Mr. Williams spoke, if not last meeting, the meeting before, and said that so many of our food service workers are, live here.
Right.
I mean, so another point of this community's engagement, and it's, it's a community, we're a community here.
One of my favorite classes.
Very good, very good. All right, colleagues, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Thank you to our food service workers, and thank you, colleagues. Motion carries five zero. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 33-22-23, reinstatement of student F-22-23. In keeping with Michigan law, a committee consisting of school board members, a school administrator, teacher, and parent of a pupil in the district. Reinstatement of a student previously expelled by the Waterford School District. After reviewing all facts and information in the matter and considering applicable state law, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the reinstatement of student F-22-23 with conditions. I so move.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Other comments or questions?
Thank you, President Ristich and Treasurer Sutherland.
Yes, thank you.
For serving on that. I know we've had a ton of them lately, I think because of all the stuff that happened, you know, back last year at the beginning of the year, had a lot of this come about, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking the time to do that.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks to our administrative team for facilitating, Ms. Cooper, and we had a really wonderful parent rep. I don't know if we have to mention their name, but we just had a really great parent rep. So thank you for, for looping them in. It was a really productive conversation, so. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries five zero. We're gonna welcome them back. Secretary Jocelyn.
Superintendent's Recommendation 34-22-23, Resolution Athletic Cooperative or Competitive Cheer. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving the cooperative agreement with Waterford Kettering and Waterford Mott for girls competitive cheer. I so move.
Support.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there comments or questions regarding our competitive, our cooperative agreement with Kettering and Mott for girls competitive cheer?
I'm glad they were able to work this out. I was a cheerleader, but there was.
Side by and competitive.
Huh?
Side by and competitive.
We did both. Ours, we were never split up, so, because we just practiced our stuff at halftime at the football games or during the basketball games or whatever, but, I mean, it's kind of a bummer, because there's nothing like competing with your cross-town rival, you know? Back when I was in school, it was goal, you know, or at regionals or state tournament or whatever, so, but I'm glad we're still gonna be able to represent, because Waterford's always had a good cheer team, so.
Yeah, when, when I was at Mott, they were state champs. Yeah, it was really impressive to see. It was unbelievable. Yeah, so I'm sure, yeah, it was an unbelievable program. So I was gonna say the same thing, and, and I'm sorry that I didn't think to say it when Allison was here, but anytime we can help kids to be involved and find ways to, you know, mitigate circumstances that would preclude them from being part of something is always a great thing. So I, I think this is a, you know, a creative solution, and hopefully it will be a really good thing for the students that are involved.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you, everyone. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. The motion carries five zero. Okay, we are now. Okay, we are now on to consideration of certain purchases, and we're going to hand it over to Treasurer Sutherland.
Thank you, President Ristich. Superintendent's Recommendation 35-22-23, Data Center and Phone Server Refresh. The Waterford School District's servers for our backup visualization and phone systems are in need of a refresh to ensure stability and effective utilization across the district per our technology plan. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of eight servers and hardware under the REMC bid contract per the summary below. The funding for this is the 2020 Bond Series One, and I so move.
Support.
Thank you, the motion's been moved and supported. Are there any comments or questions regarding our data center and phone server refresh? Yes, Treasurer Sutherland?
Just relative to timing, do we know, once this is approved, when the work will begin?
So as soon as you improve it, we will order it tomorrow. They are in stock, they are not on hold.
Oh, wow, okay.
But, so we want to be advantageous to that, because they have been back ordered.
Exactly, that's what I was wondering whether, yeah.
We want to make sure we act on this as soon as we can.
Wonderful.
In order to make sure our system stays as we would like it.
Very good, very good, super, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Colleagues, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, the motion carries five zero. So that concludes new business. Again, I do not see anyone in the audience this evening, so I'm taking it that no one would like to address the board. So with that said, we will move on to our Board of Education reports. Colleagues, are there any board reports this evening?
I have one.
Yes, please.
Or a couple, I'm going to shoot from the hip, I, my youth assistance meeting was last night, I intentionally did not take the packet into the house so that I could bring it to the meeting, and then it's in my car. So, please go to the youth assist, the Waterford Youth Assistance website, we are collecting shoes again, and we have a good amount already now. The September 24th, I believe, they will be at the party store that is on Elizabeth Lake Road. We also have Battle of the Badges coming up, so if you'd like to stockpile your shoes and throw them all in the truck for the police, or throw them all in the truck for the fire, that would be great. They do it per pound, so, snow boots, love those, but we also, they take flip-flops, little kid's shoes, all kinds of stuff, so they'll be collecting for that, and, there was something else, I don't remember, I should have brought my notes, I'll say it next time.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
But shoes, we want shoes.
Get those shoes.
Oh, the pumpkin contest, keep an eye on Facebook, Youth Assistance Facebook page, or you can go to their website, they're going to do the pumpkin contest again for the kids, so, which is really fun, so you can either paint it, color it, stick things to it, carve it, and then they'll post them on the page, and then the kids will get a gift card. They'll do different categories for the ages.
Cool.
And they're really cool to look at, and then it just becomes a war, because then people just start tagging everybody they know on Facebook to vote for their kids' pumpkins, so.
Sweet.
Nice, very nice.
Sounds great. Well, thank you so much, Member Jocelyn, yeah, Member Wagner?
For anyone that's out there in the public, I know there's no public here, but Saturday, September 24th, is the Waterford United Boys Lacrosse Alumni Game. Gates open at seven, game is at 7:30. We'll have players from years past playing against our current players, so it's, it's a lot of fun, I would highly recommend coming. Also, on Friday, September 23rd, is the Mott Fall Classic, which is the cross-country event that they host every year with schools across the region, it's also another fun event, so, just a couple of things coming up.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, Member Wagner. Really quick, a couple things, there is, for those who are watching, there is a Facebook page that is called Waterford School District Board of Education, and I think it's important for folks to realize, that is not sponsored by the Waterford School District Board of Education, and, because there's been some confusion that has, with that page posting information, it's caused some confusion, I know I received a couple of calls and emails just over the last couple of days about, where's your meeting, where, where's the, so anyway, I just wanted folks to be aware of that, we have the wonderful Megan Roberts, who is there for any question, so if, if we're seeking information about the Board of Education, about the district, contact the district, and we would be more than happy to answer those questions, so, I just wanted to, to make that clear. That's all I've got, anything else, colleagues?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, colleagues, let's now turn it over to Superintendent Lindberg for Superintendent's Report.
Well, I just have one item, a big item tonight, as all of us, we've been getting out into the schools, into the classrooms, to see a lot of the good work, the momentum that we've talked about, a lot of the investments that we've made, but it's also the people that work here, so we put together a video with the, with the title, "The Future Is Bright", that some of you were in, and we showed that on opening day, but we would like to show that tonight here for all of you and our community. The future is bright.
I think for the upcoming school year, it's the possibilities of like, what the school year is going to bring, so we have a lot of transient students, so we get to like, meet new faces, and that's always like, fun to see, who is going to come into our classroom, and the fun things we get to do, and just like, new roles I'll get to take on for leadership this year, will be really exciting.
I'm excited for the opportunity to help families engage with the community and the school. I'm excited for students to learn socially and emotionally, and grow, and just really to be part of the change in education.
What inspires me is my daily act or daily routine. My whole goal in life is to step in people's lives and be a positive influence in their lives, bring joy to them in a positive way.
Honestly, I am so excited to have kids walk in the door on the first day of school without a mask on, and to see those faces, and to see those smiles, and to be able to reconnect with them on such a personal level while half their face is not hidden.
But I'm excited to be seeing the kids again. I was at registration yesterday, and it was so exciting, I had to make sure I went down all the hallways to see my, to see the staff, my colleagues, my administration is fabulous, my teachers are fabulous, the students are fabulous, the parents are fabulous.
I am excited, and I hope to give some more offerings in my classroom, and just to see the creativity and, and the lights, and the excitement in their eyes when they accomplish something that they didn't think that they could.
I'm excited to truly partner with students this school year to grow who we are as a school. I think schools are evolving, my paradigm of what I went to during my school years has truly shifted, and the pandemic shifted it even further, so, I'm excited to partner with our students to make it a really amazing learning community.
We've also made some really great investments in our curriculum, in our devices, and I'm excited to see all of these things come together, welcoming a whole bunch of new teachers for a really amazing school year.
What inspired me for the upcoming school year is the ability to be able to reach new faces, new students, new staff, and make an impact on the community.
I think the thing that inspires me the most is the student leadership group that I work with. The kids are passionate, they're excited to get involved and build a positive culture at Kettering, and keep things rolling along with the upcoming homecoming events that we have.
As always, the kids inspire me, I'm excited to get back to them, I've missed them, and it's just really amazing feeling to see them grow, and the light bulb click on, and just to watch them succeed over the years.
But what I'm most excited about this year is, in food service, we're implementing new meal ideas, new menu ideas, just looking forward to bringing new ideas that we know the kids will like.
I am excited for all of the work that has come before to kind of start to really show results, to come to fruition in a school year that shows us, with all of our oars in the water, all of us rowing in the same direction, the collaborative spirit that is so alive and well in Waterford, and all for really a precision focus on what's best for our students.
I have never been with a district in my 20-plus-year career that has been so supportive, that has been so visionary, with boots to the ground, from the top all the way down to the classroom, students, and families.
I am proud to work for this district, because the people that work here are in it to win it for our students and families every day. They are in it, they have their heart in it, to make a difference in the lives of our kids every day, and that's so important. They bring that passion to work, whether they're a bus driver, a custodian, a teacher, an administrator, secretary, that connection helps us move everything forward, and that what gives me great hope for Waterford School District.
Just the newness of it, and it's always exciting to get a new group of kiddos in, just having a fresh start with everyone, there's been a lot of new faces in my building, so it's always nice to get back in there and start getting to know people better.
It's building those relationships with the kids and the families, so that they understand that we're not just there to be a body, that we care about what's going on in their families, at school, and to help each other out.
I hope to finish this year with the same smile that I'm starting with.
Oh, I'm always excited to meet my students and to see my colleagues, which are more like my family than my colleagues, because let's face it, we spend the majority of our days together once school starts.
We have accomplished so much, and this is our time to shine, and to show the world what we are capable of, and I just, there are just so many things, I, I don't think I could put it all into like, a 10-second answer, but I am incredibly proud of this community, especially this school district.
Oh my gosh, that was so great.
So thank you for your support, that's all I have tonight.
That was so great.
Awesome, awesome. All right, that's a, that's a good note to end on. Thank you, everyone, for being here, thank you for everything, and it's, the future is bright. So you know for their business, the meeting is a jerk.